I'd like to call the September 20th, 2022 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and transparent manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at our meeting this evening. I'd like to announce that we have parking validation and bus passes available for any members of the public who utilize the county's parking deck or public transit to attend the meeting. You can see one of the officers on your way out for validation. That's for today only. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Do any members of the public have any questions about any items that are on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We now come to public comment, and we've had three people sign up for public comment. So I will call your names in the order they signed up. If there's any other folks who would wish to address the Board during public comment who haven't signed up, there'll be an opportunity for that as well. The time limit for individual comment to the Board is for three minutes. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during the public comment period. This is the chance for the public to speak to the Board. And just share your name and where you live. You'll get an orange light when you've got about 30 seconds left, and a red light when your time's up. And we do ask that you conclude your comments once your time's up, because we want to give everyone the same amount of time. All right, the first person that signed up is Anne Craig. Come up and come up to the podium, please.
Hello, my name is Anne Craig. I live in central Asheville, and I'm here to invite everyone today here to the local observance of the International Day of Peace, which will be held tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock at the Elder and Sage Garden across from St. Lawrence Basilica. And I'd like to read the first portion of the Western North Carolina People's Declaration of Peace 2022, End Racism, Build Peace. Whereas each year, International Day of Peace is observed around the world on September 21st, the United Nations General Assembly has declared this as a day devoted to strengthening the ideals of peace through observing at least 24 hours of nonviolence and ceasefire. And whereas the theme of the 2022 International Day of Peace is End Racism, Build Peace, the people of peace in Western North Carolina urge leaders to initiate reparations to those in our communities who have been left out of generational wealth gains because of racial discrimination. And whereas local, regional, and national governments are called upon to transition to an economy based on justice and sustainability, people of peace urge developments that go to homegrown businesses that pay livable wages with jobs that actually create peace. And whereas governments are responsible for making wise decisions, people of peace urge our leaders to hear calls from home and around the world for peace, especially for the dismantling of nuclear weapons and negotiations among countries involved in the Ukraine and other conflicts around the world. And whereas communities, excuse me, thrive when they feel safe, people of peace urge public safety departments to be nonmilitarized, use of force minimized, and de-escalation maximized. That's the end of my part. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Anne. The next person that signed up is Rachel Bliss.
Good evening, Commissioners. I will continue what Anne so aptly said with some more of our proclamation or declaration. Whereas communities desire to protect planet Earth, land, air, water, and climate, people of peace urge utilization of clean, renewable energy for our homes, businesses, government buildings, schools, churches, and transportation modes. And whereas residents want their children, families, and communities protected from violence, the people of peace urge enactment of responsible gun violence prevention laws and regulations. Whereas communities prefer to spend more on education, healthcare, housing, and the environment, the people of peace urge less be spent on militarization at the federal and local levels. And whereas a prosperous community is the goal of all residents of Western North Carolina, we, the people of peace, envision cities and towns where all natives and immigrants are equipped to reap the harvest of a just and peaceful community, county, state, country, and world every day of the year. Therefore, we, the people of peace in Western North Carolina, hereby designate Wednesday, September 21st, 2022, as our 13th Annual International Day of Peace in Western North Carolina. And we urge our brothers and sisters to take necessary actions, such as protesting, resisting, and contacting elected leaders regarding transparency and legislation, so we can all end racism and build peace at home and around the world. Thank you. And one more person to read.
Tom Craig.
My name is Tom Craig, and I live in Asheville. The signatories to this declaration are as follows: The Alliance to Protect the People and Places We Live, Asheville Friends Meeting, Beloved Asheville, Beyond Extreme Energy, Carolina Jews for Peace, Elder and Sage Community Gardens, Ethical Humanist Society of Asheville Board, Firestorm Books and Coffee, First Congregational United Church of Christ Asheville, Friends Committee for National Legislation Advocacy Team of Western North Carolina, Healthcare for All WNC, Jubilee Community, Just Peace for Israel-Palestine, Land of the Sky United Church of Christ, Lulu Bootiques, Mountain Mindfulness Sangha, NC Catholic Committee in Appalachia, NC Peace Action, NC Physicians for Social Responsibility, Papa and Mama Bears Peace Garden, Peace Day Asheville, Peace is Possible NC, Proposition One Committee, Campaign for a Nuclear-Free Future, Reject Raytheon Asheville, the Sahara Peace Choir, St. Eugene's Catholic Church, Veterans for Peace Western North Carolina, Unitarian Universalist Congregation of Asheville, WNC for Peace, Women Movers, Women's International League for Peace and Freedom, U.S. Disarm End Wars Committee. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That concludes everyone that signed up. Are there any other members of the community that would like to address the Board during public comment? All right. Next up on the agenda, we have a couple of presentations, and the first one is a proclamation recognizing Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month, and County Commissioner Jasmine Beach-Ferrara will present the proclamation. And thank you to all the members of the community who are with us this evening on this item.
Good evening and welcome. I will first read the proclamation in English, and then we'll read it in Spanish. A proclamation recognizing National Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. Whereas National Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month celebrates the Hispanic and Latino community and highlights its countless achievements, and whereas the observation began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson and was enacted into federal law on August 17, 1988, calling upon all the people of the United States to observe this time with ceremonies, activities, and programs. And whereas many Latino Americans trace their roots to the cultures of the indigenous peoples of the Americas, including the Oaxacs, the Aztecs, the Incas, the Maya, and the Taños, some trace their roots to the Spanish explorers or to the Africans who were brought as slaves to the New World. And whereas September 15 to October 15 is recognized as National Hispanic Heritage Month, which is a time to honor the invaluable ways Hispanics and Latinos contribute to our common goals, celebrate their diverse cultures, and to work towards a stronger, more inclusive, and more prosperous society for all. And whereas this year's theme, Unidos, inclusivity for a stronger nation, reinforces the need to ensure diverse voices and perspectives are welcomed in decision-making processes, thereby helping to build stronger communities and a stronger nation. And whereas Hispanics and Latinos have and continue to serve as civil rights leaders, politicians, military service members, educators, first responders, science pioneers, migrant workers, and public servants for our country. And whereas Hispanics have enhanced and shaped our national character with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their communities while adding their own distinct and dynamic perspectives to the story of our country. And whereas Hispanic and Latino Americans represent a significant and fast-growing demographic of Buncombe County, we honor the invaluable ways they contribute to our great community. And now, therefore, let it be proclaimed that September 15 to October 15, 2022, is National Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month in Buncombe County, and encourage our community to join us in celebrating the great contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans to our country, county, state, and nation. Signed by Brownie Newman, Chairman of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners.
A proclamation, Mes Nacional de la Herencia Hispana y Latina. Considerando que el mes nacional de la herencia hispana y latina celebra a la comunidad hispana y latina y destaca sus innumerables logros. Y, considerando que la observancia comenzó en 1968 como la semana de la herencia hispana bajo la presidencia de Lyndon B. Johnson y fue promulgada ley federal de 17 de agosto de 1988 mediante la cual se llamaba a todos los ciudadanos de los Estados Unidos a comenorar esta semana con ceremonias, actividades, y programas. Y, considerando que muchas estadounenses de origen latino remontan sus raíces a las culturas de los pueblos indígenas de la Americana como la Oaxacas, la Aztecas, los Incas, las Mayas, y los Tianos, mientras que algunos también a los exploradores españoles y a los africanos que fueron traeros como esclavos el Nuevo Mundo. Y, considerando que el periodo entre el 15 de septiembre y el 15 de octubre se reconoce como el más mes nacional de la herencia hispana y latina, que es un momento para honrar las invaluable formas en que la comunidad hispana y latina contribuye a nuestras metas comunas, celebrar sus diversas culturas y trabajar por una sociedad más fuerte, más inclusiva, y más prospera para todos. Y, considerando que el tema de este año, Unidos, inclusividad para una nación más fuerte, refuerza la necesidad de garantizar que las diversas voces y perspectivas sean cogidas en los procesos de toma de decisiones, contribuyendo así a construir comunidades más fuertes y una nación más fuerte. Considerando que los integrantes de la comunidad hispana y latina han actuado y siguen actuando como líderes de las derechas civiles, políticos, miembros del servicio militar, educadores, socorristas, pioneros de la ciencia, trabajadores, migrantes, y servidores públicos para nuestro país. Y, considerando que la comunidad hispana ha enriquecido y formido nuestro carácter nacional con tradiciones centenares que reflejan las costumbres multiectas y multiculturales de sus comunidades, y la vez que andan sus propias perspectivas singulares y dinámicas y la histórica de nuestro país. Considerando que los estudiantes de origen hispano y latino representan un grupo demográfico importante y de rápido crecimiento en el candado de Buncombe, honramos las invaluable formas en la contribuyen en nuestra gran comunidad. Y ahora, por lo tanto, proclame este del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre de 2022 el mes nacional de la herencia hispana y latina en el candado de Buncombe, y invitése a nuestra comunidad e inurnse a nuestros para celebrar las grandes contribuciones de los Estados Unidos de origen hispano y latino en nuestro candado, estado, y nación. Signed by Brownie Newman.
My name is Luis Carlos Serapio, and I would like to address everyone in this room for a minute. So first of all, I want to thank you for celebrating your Hispanic heritage, Buncombe County. As the founder of AshvilleMulticultural.com, I want you to know this platform was born out of the need to diversify local media in a city where Latinos can be found in every layer of our society. When I started this platform, I wanted to show Asheville is bilingual, diverse, multicultural, and I wanted to build a bridge where we can share all the things that bind us together. Because it is easier to look at our difference and to feed division, and I don't want to be part of that. I want to acknowledge and thank the following people: Kirsten and Ross Breton, owners of Easy Scoffy. Because not only this platform was born in their business, but it was also them who were the first ones to see the value of supporting a platform that could make the invisible be seen in this town. Yes, there are so many Latinos in Asheville, and somehow it seemed to me that we are oftentimes seen as a labor force. But you were able to see us as more than workers, Kirsten and Ross, and for this, I thank you. John Arwater from Amasitas Taqueria and Taco Temple, thank you for the love you have shown for Mexican and Latino culture, John, for supporting many of the Latinos working for you during their times of need, for helping the family who lost their Salvadorian mother in an accident and helped with the funeral. Thank you for seeing us and much more than just, as much more than just a labor force. Thank you, my dear friend Sylvia Vega, for being here today and for listening to me so many times, even when I didn't know what I was doing, but for believing and always supporting me. I love you, Maja. Thank you, Vicky Vancher, for the meaningful conversations that we have had, for your support of Ashville Multicultural, and for being the lady you are, and at times you have been like a mother to me. Thank you, Lilian Galvez, Director of Communications and Public Engagement for Buncombe County, for believing in Ashville Multicultural as a platform that can help your office spread your message while we make it bilingual. Thank you, Chef Mei Sujitra and Husband Travis Quinn from Typer, for believing in discovering Asheville and for introducing me to Raina Huang, a YouTuber from China who allowed me to be on her channel. We're over 600,000 followers, and therefore making me see this platform, meaning to become AshvilleMulticultural.com. Thank you, Doña Pati Science, for making organizations like Chow Chow, the biggest culinary event in Asheville, see immigrants like you with a big heart and much desire to be part of a vibrant and multicultural culinary scene. Chloe Serapio White, thank you for helping me want to be a better human being, for allowing me to witness you walk and for planting the seed of kindness in my heart. You are a badass, and yet you are the kindest person I have ever known. Isabella Serapio White, thank you, my English-American little girl, for allowing me to share with you my traditions, our salsa dancing, and the beauty of our Latino culture. Enzo Serapio White, thank you for loving me the way you do, for the curiosity you show for your Latin roots. You are the sweetest boy unknown, and one day when you become a soccer player, I hope you play for the beautiful country where you were born, not for the country where your father was born. Because yes, you are Latino, but you are an American, and your father loved this land, and this country has given him so much opportunity, and you. Thank you, Asheville. I'm not very religious, but I wish many blessings on all of you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Muchas gracias por la programación que están haciendo y en nombre de la comunidad de Emma que estamos representados aquí. Gracias.
Thank you so much for your proclamation today and for inviting Poder Emma here. All right, thank you all. Appreciate it. All right. The next item on our agenda is an update on the Tropical Storm Fred Disaster Recovery Program, and Taylor Jones, our emergency services director, is here to present this item.
So we have tonight with us folks from the Office of Budget Management State. Y'all come up and... So they prepared to give us a presentation, giving the overview of Tropical Storm Fred and our recovery efforts as a county and as a state. Okay, thank y'all.
Thank y'all for being here.
We have hard copies of the slides if anybody would prefer to have those.
Well, good evening. I'm Rich Trumper with the Office of State Budget Management Disaster Recovery. Tonight, I'm joined by Dana Phillips, and we want to give a very brief overview of Tropical Storm Fred Recovery. Last year, November, $44 million was allocated for Tropical Storm Fred over 11 counties in Western North Carolina. That was broken to five categories as shown on the second slide, and I don't know how to control this, so... There are six categories here, but the first five categories were home reconstructions, $20 million, private roads and bridges not serviced by DOT, $15 million, short-term housing for displaced families, $4 million, home repairs, $3 million, and landlord or rental assistance for $2 million. Recently, an additional $5 million was allocated for roads and bridges. As you can see, for home reconstructions, to date, 35% of that money has been allocated, spent, or obligated. The original $15 million, 100% of that was spent or obligated as of September the 12th. 11% of short-term housing, 40% for home repairs, and 15% for landlord assistance. We are just now receiving the $5 million and starting to program that, and as of this week, a little over $1 million of that is now programmed, spent, or obligated. We currently have three offices that were based in Raleigh. Our main office is in Waynesville. We have satellite locations in Marion and Burnsville as well. I'm turning it over to Dana to give us an update of where we stand with each of the 11 counties and a Buncombe-specific update.
Thank you. Again, my name is Dana Phillips, and I'm the Operations Manager with the OSBN Disaster Recovery Team. And first thing I want to highlight is some of the numbers that you're going to see, you can see our dates we're going to talk about now is based on September 9th on these applications, first of all. So, so far, as of September 9th, we received a total of 710 applications. 710 applications been received by our office. And one of the things that I want to highlight as well is our office and our program started on January 10th. So we've been doing the recovery effort since January 10th, 2022. So we've got a good solid eight months into our program so far. Of the 710 applications, 619 have been deemed to be eligible. Well, I'll talk a little bit more about the eligibility and withdrawal when we start talking about some Buncombe specifics. So just wanted to give you that highlight as well. You can see that the four most impacted counties have been hay... You can see that the four most impacted counties have been Haywood, Yancey, Buncombe, and McDowell Counties. That's where we've received the most applications. And as you may be aware, there were three counties that were declared as a federal disaster, and they were Buncombe, Haywood, and Transylvania County. So it's, Yancey and McDowell were not in that, however, they are in our top four counties of applications received. Also, 43% of all of the eligible projects that we've received have been completed, and that's a number our team is really proud of. In eight months to done that much recovery in a disaster is a testament to the team, and this wouldn't happen without these folks in the back, back there. We've got several of our team members, matter of fact, it is pretty much the Tropical Storm Fred Office. As Director Trumper mentioned, we spent a lot of time in Raleigh, he and I, doing some things, but these are the folks back there in the back that are making things happen. We've got Wilson and John, Dawson and Kristen. These folks are boots on the ground, meeting people in all of these 11 counties pretty much every day, hitting it as hard as they can go, working long hours, so special thanks to those people back there in that corner. They're really the ones making it happen. Want to start talking about some Buncombe-specific information? There we go. Technology does work with me every now and then. So again, these numbers are based on September 9th. So you can see, right now, all we've received, for all 11 counties, we've received 117 applications for housing, 237 for roads, and you can see the 265 have been completed, and that's our 619 for eligible. You can see the biggest majority, as Director Trumper pointed out, was roads and bridges. So many roads, so many bridges, so much access to homes were cut off. I'm sure everybody here at the Board is aware of that, you've seen it, you probably know folks. So that's where we spend a lot of time. There's a lot of housing recovery as well, but you can see the majority of our stuff is roads and bridges, where we spend a lot of time. Buncombe County specifically, as of September 9th, we received 11 applications for housing repairs, 35 for roads and bridges, and we've got 36 complete. Again, you can see the majority in the area is for roads and bridges. What I do want to point out is for the roads and bridges, specific to Buncombe County, we have helped over 201 families specifically have been impacted in Buncombe County. When we look at all 11 counties, we're probably well over the, we have 1,500 folks, but for Buncombe specific, we've had 201 families have been assisted, meaning they have good access back to their properties, they can get home again, and we're going to continue to get that number up as we move along. Couple of other things I want to highlight. Eligibility, withdrawn applications. In Buncombe County, we've received 13 applications which we consider ineligible or withdrawn. Of those 13, eight are duplicates. So a duplicate entry would be, let's say we have a housing development or a neighborhood that has 30 homes. Eight folks from that neighborhood applied for the one bridge that leads there. We didn't need all eight of them, so that's how that duplication came in there. We have five that have a little bit other, they didn't quite fall into our bucket. Some of them were some bank restoration. Our program doesn't do bank restorations. We can't do river cleanup, we can't do these. We are residential homes, we are residential rental properties through landlords, and we can't do farm buildings, we can't do that kind of stuff, so we have other structures that just didn't qualify. So of that, only five structures and applications didn't currently qualify. Nothing that says we can't try to go back and look a little bit later, and we'll try our best, but right now, these five are ineligible for the program. Also, one other thing I'd like to highlight is, right now, over 3.1 million has been allocated, spent, or encumbered for Buncombe County, and that is again as of September 9th. So 3.1 million in total spending, encumbrance, allocated funds to Buncombe County. One of the reasons that Director Trumper wanted us to come here and spread the word is, we want to get out in front of the community. There are folks who are probably watching this tonight, or out in the audience here, that know folks who are impacted. That's why we're here. We want to reach out, we need to know who these folks are. We'd like to see these applications for Buncombe County, if folks are hurting, let's double these numbers if there's folks hurting out there that are impacted by Tropical Storm Fred, and that's why we're here. We want to plead with everybody, if you have a problem, let us know. We want to help, we have funding. Now, we picked up more money for bridges, which is a good thing. We're trying to allocate more money as much as we can, but as the Director pointed out, we have certain things we can only do with this money. It's assigned to certain buckets, so we're trying to work on that as well. The last thing I just want to mention? Oh, here we go. Well, there we go. All right, last thing I want to mention, that's our contact information. You can see we have a website. Folks want to go online, tsfred.nc.gov. That's one of the best ways to reach us. We've got an email address as well, we've got a 844 number, and as the Director mentioned, we have a full-time presence in our office in Waynesville and Haywood County, and we have satellite offices in Yancey and Burnsville and Marion and McDowell County. And again, we appreciate you guys giving us the opportunity to speak, and the Director and I would love to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, hey, thank you so much for the updates and the information. Commissioners, are there any questions?
So you said part of this is outreach, so is it a focus right now on more for the bridges? Is that kind of the area you're looking for for Buncombe County? Or can you tell us more about what specifically you're focused on in Buncombe County, so we know who to, for folks that are listening, they'll know that this money is here?
Yes, ma'am. Roads and bridges, absolutely, but we're worried about folks that may be living in unsafe housing. We've got winter coming, we worry that folks haven't said they need help, they thought somebody else was in a worse position than they were. They didn't think there'd be enough money to help them. Now's the time for those families to reach out to us and get any help they need. One of the things that we worry about is that this was mostly a flooding event. Tropical Storm Fred did rain damage roofs, dropped trees on houses. Those are folks that do qualify for this program as well, it does not have to be a flood-related event. So any damage, any kind of structure, your primary residence, your bridge, if you don't feel safe in your house, we want to talk to those families.
Commissioners, any other questions? Well, gentlemen, we really appreciate you being here, we appreciate all the members of your team who are working to get out and help the people impacted by this really extreme weather event. I think we all remember that day very distinctly. We had a commission meeting scheduled that, for almost the exact same time that the storm, you know, rolled into our area, and, which we canceled because it looked like it was going to be, it looked like it was going to be severe. And so we appreciate everyone helping the folks most impacted, getting back on their feet, and communities with all this important infrastructure and repairs to people's homes and properties. So thank you so much, and Taylor, thanks for bringing this to us, and for all the folks on the team all across western North Carolina. We know folks have really been pulling together as a region to help us get back on our feet, especially in the communities that were most impacted. So thank you all for being part of that important effort.
Thanks for letting us be here tonight.
All right. All right. The next item on our agenda is a report from the Board of Equalization and Review, and Debbie Lane, the Chairperson, is here to help us with this item. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Good evening. Chairman Newman, Commissioners, thanks for having me this evening. I am here. Who's working the clicker? You are?
No. We should have access to. But we can do it from the room if it's not.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, here you go. You can do it with this button here to the right.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, thanks again for allowing me to be here. We've been asked by the Commissioners to give an update, basically last year, Equalization, the Tax Equalization and Review Board, of which I guess that is up there. Here's the members. I am currently the Chairperson of the Committee. Marion McKinney is Vice Chair. The other members are Philip Price, Michael Holgate, and Mark Morris. This is kind of our purpose, if you will. We have been charged with to review, our Equalization and Review Board shall hear and decide all real and personal property appeals related to the appraisal value, CITUS, taxability, discovery, present use of value, and any exemptions to those. Not used to doing both of these. This page is kind of what we do in a year's session. We hear and decide any timely filed appeals, there's dates for that, so if it's timely filed, we hear the case and listen to the taxpayer, the citizen. We examine and review tax listings for the current year, the year we're in now. Assure any changes made under the provisions of the North Carolina statutes. Obviously, we follow the North Carolina, which is what we have been charged to do as the tax office here is charged to do. We notify the taxpayers of any decisions that's been rendered by our board, and any follow-up and any options that they have. And assure the taxpayer, he has received due process under the provisions of the North There we go. Kind of, I guess that's what we do, and what we did last year, we're really reporting on 2021's session. We heard a total of 383 appeals, 65 of those were business personal property appeals, five were exemptions, 191 builder's inventory appeals, was only one commercial appeal property, and 121 residential real estate appeals. So we are now in the 2022 session, and we have currently opened and closed the session as far as timely for appeals, and we have scheduled meetings between October and December until everything that has been properly filed, timely filed, is heard. And I thank you for allowing me to do that update.
All right, thank you very much for coming to talk to us. And so, so obviously, when we go through a revaluation period, that's when there's going to be this bigger, you know, number of appeals filed following that. So the numbers that you just shared, those are more typical for a non-revaluation year. Is that a fair way to think about it, or an accurate way to think about it?
Mr. Miller, is that a normal number?
I mean, I'm sure it's different every year, but it's just kind of more typical. Is that right?
Keith and his staff makes our job very easy because many, many of them are resolved before they come to our board.
Yeah, so the 383 that has been reported to you are actual appeals that the board heard. Total appeals were a little over 8,000 for the year 2021. So she is reporting for you on the reappraisal year. The other appeals, other than the 381, are ones that the staff works out with the property owners, and they get settled before they get to the Board of Equalization and Review.
Okay, so if someone files an appeal, the process first is they can meet with the staff, see if they can arrive at some agreement. If they can't, that's when the Board of Equalization hears their case.
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. Understood. All right, Commissioners, any other questions at this time? All right, well, we appreciate you and the other members who serve on the Board of Equalization. Thank you for the updates. All right, Commissioners, we have a couple of public hearings. The first one is the FY 2024 Annual Section 5311 Administrative Grant Application, and William High, our Planning and Development Staff Office, will present this item.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to provide information on the proposed FY 2024 Annual Section 5311 Administrative Grant Application. The required public hearing and associated resolution are part of our annual grant application to the North Carolina Department of Transportation for state and federal grant funds. The grant funds we seek to apply support a portion of our annual administrative costs for Buncombe County's Community Transportation System, Mountain Mobility. Mountain Mobility serves older adults, persons with disabilities, clients of human service agencies, and the general public. The administrative grant consists of 80% federal, 5% state, and 15% local funding. Buncombe County's fiscal year 2024 funding level, established by the North Carolina Department of Transportation, is $409,299, with $347,903 in federal and state funds, with a local match of $61,000, $61,396. Administrative funds will be used to assist in covering costs for administrative staff wages and contract costs, and technology, communications, and facility costs for the program. A notice of the public hearing has been provided for your information. The Buncombe County Community Transportation Advisory Board and staff would like to thank the Board for its continuing support of the Mountain Mobility Program. I will be glad to answer any questions to the Board you may have on the grant application or resolution following the public hearing.
Thanks, William. Are there any initial questions, Commissioners? If not, let's go ahead and hold the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at 5:46 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak during the public hearing? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 5:47 PM. If there are no questions, is there a motion to adopt the resolution? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
The next item is a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Neighborhood Revitalization, and Nancy Williams will present this item. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Commissioner, Chairman. So tonight is the second public hearing in this process. Do we have a presentation? There we go. All right. So the Community Development Block Grant Neighborhood Revitalization Funds, the Notice of Funding Availability was released in August. We had the public hearing for the Citizen Participation Plan last month, so... The next step. So these are funds that we are requesting from the state that come through the Department of Commerce to assist their non-entitlement municipalities, and that means those are municipalities that don't get the Community Development Block Grants straight from HUD and from the federal line. So in this case, City of Asheville is an entitlement city, and so any of these funds would not be able to be utilized within Asheville, just as a clarification for that. So we have so far held the first public hearing for the Citizen Participation Plan, which was approved, and we have had public notices published for both that, for that public hearing as well as this one, and then we're requesting any public input regarding what activities to apply for. These funds can be used for different levels of rehabilitation, repair, as well as up to full replacement for homes. And these are for homeowners and for properties that are considered real property. So the one thing it can't be utilized for in terms of repairs would be like mobile homes that are not on permanent foundations. So tonight, we're requesting a second public hearing for this application and your approval authorizing the submission of the application to the State Commerce Department.
All right. Thank you so much.
Whoop, there's a little bit more.
Oh wait, there's more.
So basically, the, like I said, the Community Development Block Grant Funds can be used for a variety of things. Repair, replacement, certainly up to HUD standards, federal standards, and with rehabilitation being more extensive than the traditional emergency repair work, which is what our Affordable Housing Services Program has been funding. So this is also a funding opportunity to... So this is also a funding opportunity to expand what we are able to do in the county so we can do it to a more extensive level. We are proposing to do repair work up to $30,000, where the Affordable Housing Services Program is limited currently to $15,000. What this allows for is that a more than one system or need can be addressed for a homeowner. And it also allows our partners to go in, be more efficient, utilizing one funding source instead of pulling, you know, a multitude of funding sources together. So the funding that we are requesting from the state would be for $400,000. As I said, it is going to be able to be utilized outside of the City of Asheville. It is a very competitive process. With 100 counties, the focus is for Tier One and Tier Two, but we are able to apply as a Tier Three county because we still meet the requirements for that, and we have a great need out within the county for creating safe and stable homes for our homeowners. We're looking at utilizing at the minimum $360,000 for the actual rehabilitation, and then a minimum of 40, I'm sorry, maximum 40,000 for the actual grant administration. So, thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you. All right. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing at 5:52 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak during the public hearing? Yes, ma'am. And you can come over to the podium, please, so Will can hear you and get you recorded in the minutes. Thank you for being here.
Hi, I'm Kathryn Cook from Candler. I have a question. I noticed in your presentation that you had labeled or listed mobile homeowners as being excluded from the grant process. Could you just kind of share with me what the basis for excluding them?
And go ahead and ask your questions and make your comments, and then after that, we'll make sure we answer all your questions, okay?
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
No, that was my biggest question because we do have a lot of elderly homeowners without, in the county, and if they are needing assistance with their home, and most of them on a fixed income, I see them being short-changed because they're being left out.
Yep. It's a good question. When we close the public hearing, we'll come back and we'll make sure we answer that, okay?
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other members of the public who wish to comment during the hearing? All right. We'll close the public hearing at 5:53 PM. And could you provide some additional information about why they're not allowed to be considered within this program?
Certainly. This is a federal aspect that in the state has set the criteria that a mobile home, if it is on a permanent foundation, can be, these funds can be utilized for repair, emergency repair, that level. So it's simply a state and federal requirement that it has to be on a permanent foundation, and it also has to do with the way the state interprets that aspect to it. So it is an issue. We have a lot of discussions with our partners about this, and we are looking at, you know, ways to actually address these issues because it is true that we do have a lot of seniors and others that are living in unsafe homes.
Yep. Okay. So these policies were set at the state and federal level. It's not something that Buncombe County proposed, limiting it in those ways, but it's just we have to follow the rules that were given to us. The county also invests funding from our Affordable Housing Services Program for home repair, and can those funds be used for manufactured homes? Or do we, for our own local funding that we invest, do we have any of the similar prohibitions?
I'll let Matthew Cable respond to that.
Hey, Matt, thanks for being here.
I'll jump in. Thank you, Nancy. So we don't have the same restrictions in place, and we regularly use the Affordable Housing Services Program funding to support emergency repair activities within manufactured homes within the county.
Right. So where we use our own funds, we try to be as flexible as we can to address all those different residents' needs in different kinds of housing.
Correct.
Thank you so much.
So one question, Matt, before you go away, just so the lady knows and can get that word out. How do people access that program, or what should they be looking for so that she can let her neighbors know?
Sure. So the, with regard to the Affordable Housing Services Program, which is separate from the item considered tonight, there is an annual process by which partners can apply for funding to support that. The board allocates that through the annual budget and identifies which partners will receive that currently. In the current fiscal year, at this point in time, both Asheville Area Habitat for Humanity and Mountain Housing Opportunities are implementing emergency repair programs using county funding. Those entities also receive some other funds that have different kinds of restrictions, but they are the two largest entities that provide that kind of service. So anyone who's in need of emergency repair, that's looking for emergency repair that Buncombe County is supporting, would contact those two entities at this time.
Thanks, Matt. Any other questions or comments, Commissioners? Is there a motion to support the resolution approving submittal of the application?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any items under the county managers' reports?
Yes, I do have one item. I want to recognize our Ag and Land Resources staff to come talk about $1.3 million in grant funding that they've received.
Do we have a presentation to share? Okay.
Coming.
Sweet. All righty. Well, good evening, Commissioners. I am Ariel Zipe. I am the Farmland Preservation Manager for Buncombe County, and this is my teammate, the Farmland Preservation Coordinator of NINIC. And we are very excited to share some good news to help us move towards our land conservation goals. So recently, over the last month, we were awarded 1.1 million from the Agricultural Development and Farmland Preservation Trust Fund, placing Buncombe County as second in the state for being awarded those grant funds for easements. And in addition to that, we've also secured the, we secured 224,000 from the federal grant program, the Agricultural Conservation Easement Program, to protect a working farm right outside of Weaverville. So very excited about, about these significant grant funds coming into the county. Just to tell you a little bit more about what that impact, the impact that these funds will make, basically, it will allow the county to permanently protect 314 acres in, and those, those acres are spread amongst four projects in the Newfound Community in Lester and one project just right outside of Weaverville. So this is helping us bring, come closer to reach our strategic plan goals, but also the recent goal that you set around initiating conservation to 20% of the county lands by 2030. So very excited about this, just a bit about these grant funds. These funds make it possible for, for us to fund easements for landowners that can't afford to fully donate their development rights. So we have a lot of farmers in our community that have farmed their whole life, and while these landowners do get compensation, they do get some compensation if they're eligible for these specific grants. They are only getting compensated just a portion of what they're truly giving up. They're, they're really giving up quite a bit of value there. So we're really happy to share this, these good news with you and to thank you for all the support you've given our program and the other conservation agencies in the county. Just with your support, we were able to add a teammate, a team member to our crew, which has enabled us to really expand the program. So that's been very helpful. So thank you, Buncombe County. Thank you to the state and the federal government, as well as our willing, dedicated landowners. So, thank you.
Thank you. Great update. Anything else, Sybil? We have no items under Old Business under New Business. We have a resolution granting utility and temporary construction easements to Public Service Company of North Carolina doing business as Dominion Energy. Michael Free will present this item, which I believe is a follow-up on a previous item we had some information on.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we were at briefing agenda last time, so this is the first time under New Business. Dominion Energy has requested that Buncombe County grant them a permanent easement and a temporary construction easement on two pieces of property the county owns over in Swananoa on Old Highway 70. It's about a mile or so west of Black Mountain, not far from Owen Middle School on US Highway 70, Old US Highway 70. They're asking for this easement and would pay the county $80,000 for the easements. The county owns these properties because they were FEMA buyout properties. There were several residences on the property 30 years ago or so, and so the FEMA agency bought out those owners and deeded it to the county to hold. It's restricted, so the county cannot improve it. It could be used for grazing or farming, but the county could not improve it in any other way. The project is intended to replace an existing line that is in need of repair or replacement because it's exposed to the elements and understand that it's susceptible to damage from flooding. It's the same-sized pipe that will go in with the existing nearby line, and it is not intended to expand any service. And the best news is, you don't have to take my word for it. There are several people here from Dominion Energy that can answer any questions you have, and I'll ask Warren Dumford to come up and answer any questions you have or fill in any blanks I've missed.
Commissioners, Chair. Okay. My name is Warren Dumford. I'm Senior Land Representative for Dominion Energy, and we appreciate you considering our request.
Commissioners, are there any members here to answer questions? Thank you for being here. Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. The second item under New Business is a budget amendment for state lottery project awards. Buncombe County Schools is for security hardware outfits, and John Hudson, our Budget Director, will present this item.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This amendment establishes a budget of $1,700,000 for the Buncombe County Schools Lottery Project of Security Hardware Upfit for Doors at Various Schools. The application for this project was approved on July 19th, and the funds have been received.
Thanks, John.
To approve the budget amendment.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thanks, John.
Thank you.
All right. We have some board appointments to address. We did some interviews for Planning Board members earlier this afternoon. We appreciate everyone who put their names forward for the Planning Board. All very well-qualified applicants, so not an easy decision to make. And I think what we will do is we'll start over on Commissioner Vice Chair Amanda Edwards' side, and if we could just each go by and identify the member that you are most supportive of, let's do that and see where we're at.
Eric Robinson.
Eric Robinson.
Eric Robinson.
Eric Robinson.
Eric Robinson.
All right. Again, we appreciate everyone who applied, so thank you all for taking time to talk to us this afternoon about all these important growth and development issues facing Buncombe County, and we appreciate Eric joining the Planning Board. We are going to do interviews for, I believe, there was some discussion before the meeting about doing interviews for the folks who've applied for the Mountain Community Capital Fund, and did we talk about a date to do that, do the interviews?
You can decide now, or?
Yeah.
So?
Before the next meeting?
Is there any, is there any time sensitivity around the appointment that we're aware of?
I'm not aware of any sensitivity. I think, okay, Tim Love has just given me the thumbs up that there is no sensitivity for time.
Okay.
Can we do it on the fourth?
Yeah. In two, we could do it in two weeks from now at the next meeting. So let's just plan on, we'll have a briefing meeting. That is a day where we have affordable housing. We only have two interviews. Why don't we just plan on doing them? Can we plan on doing them at like 2:30? Sybil, does that raise any initial, like, I don't know what's on the, or Matt's already left, I think, but, okay, so maybe we should not plan on doing it right then. Could we plan on doing it at 3 o'clock and start the briefing meeting at 3:30? I don't know what's on that agenda either. Or we could do it, you know, we could do it before the Affordable Housing Meeting. Why don't we do it before so we're not crunching up too much?
So I think we may have some other, I think I have on mine, a three-by-three, nine to 11?
From nine to 11?
I think so.
Okay. So that's from nine to 11.
And then, and then aren't we holding for DFI also that day? Or did that get changed? I have it on mine to hold for DFI. I think they were booking appointments throughout the day.
For that, it is that day.
Okay.
All right. We're not going to do it on this day. There's too much going on. It's just two interviews, but there's just a lot going on that day. So let's look at.
Do you have the work session on the 27th? You could do before that.
Next week.
Mm-hmm.
We are going to do a closed session that day, too. We don't think that's going to take a long time.
That looks good.
Does that work for folks? The briefing, I'm sorry, the, the meeting's at 3 o'clock, and if we do a closed session, which we probably need, you know, 30 to 45 minutes for, should be plenty, I think. Was there a suggestion about, would we do that before the 3 o'clock meeting?
I think it's at 11.
11 to 3.
Yeah, I was going to say.
It's at 11. Why do I have 3 o'clock in my head? So it's at 11:00 AM. 11:00 AM until what time?
3.
That's why. 11:00 AM till 3 o'clock. Okay. So if we did a closed session, would we do the closed session after the comp plan discussion? So that would be whenever we get done with the comp plan discussion, or at 3:00? We could do the interviews at 10:30 and get those knocked out.
Okay. And so I think originally, when we just discussed the closed session, we was talking about doing it before, but you would rather have it at the end of the comp plan.
I think that might be better so that whatever staff or other folks who are here for the comp plan, you know, we can do that discussion, get that done, they can leave so they're not kind of waiting for us to finish a closed session. So I think doing the closed session after we finish the comp plan would be probably a little bit more efficient.
So real quick question, Sybil. Since I will be noticing, I guess, like, two meetings, do you think the comp plan is going to get over at 3:00? Or do I, should I just say it's going to be at the end of?
I would just say it's going to be at the end.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And 10:30 interviews that day work for folks? All right. Sounds like a plan. All right. We have some announcements, and let me make sure I get this right, just based on what we were just talking about. On September 27th at 3:00 PM, the Commissioners are going to have a meeting to discuss the comprehensive plan. Oh, here's where I got the 3:00 PM from. It's on this. It's at 11:00 AM. Sorry, there was, I think there was, it's supposed to say it concludes at 3:00 PM, but it does start at 11:00 AM. At 11:00 AM, starting at 11:00 AM, we'll discuss the comp plan. We're also going to have a closed session that afternoon to discuss a real estate-related item. And at 10:30, we're going to have interviews for boards and commission applicants. So that's at September 27th, 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. On October 4th at 3:00 PM, the Commissioners will hold a briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. On October 4th at 5:00 PM, will be the Commissioners' regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. That concludes all items on our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thanks all for being with us.